Good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting for July 12, 2016. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I, the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, my nation, under God and indivisible, with the peace and justice for all. I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children in you. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
We have one special order of business tonight. Is Ms. Padrick carrying that? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Gent. As we have all heard the expression in the past, that a picture can say a thousand words. With today's technological innovations, we know that this can allow us to share so much more. And with our students doing so many more things today, it is very important that we use our technology in order to help promote the programs and the opportunities that our students have within our schools. In late spring, we offered a challenge to our high schools to leverage the creativity and the ingenuity of their students to create a two- to three-minute site-specific showcase video to promote the quality programs and opportunities that students are afforded in St. Lucie Public Schools. Digital design, digital media, and TV production classes were ideal go-tos for such a project. And included in the specifications for this project were accuracy of content, creativity of presentation, adherence to a two- to three-minute timeframe, innovation in the use of digital media, and qualities to engage audiences. All of our area high schools participated. And after reviewing the creative genius of all of the entries, we are very excited to announce this evening that Port St. Lucie High School has been selected as the Digital Innovation Challenge winner. Mr. Brian Smith, who is the TV production instructor, proudly facilitated the students, to whom he attributes credit for the production of this video. This, as well as other videos, will be posted on school-based websites as tools for our community to take a closer look at St. Lucie Public Schools. We'll be working with our middle schools, our K- through eight schools, our elementary schools, to produce similar videos so that they too can post these videos on their sites. So without further ado, let us take a look at Port St. Lucie High School's video.
Well, our goal every day at Port St. Lucie High School is to make sure we're creating engaging and rigorous work for students that will allow them to be future-ready. It will allow our students to go on and transition to anything they would like to do post-high school, whether it's go to college, whether it's go to a technical program, or join the military, or raise a family. That is our ultimate goal, is to graduate every student here and prepare them for life.
I'm currently in the IB program. I'm not a full candidate, but I take Theory of Knowledge and History of Americas. And those classes, they really push you. And I think being in that environment can help you, can motivate you to do better than anybody else that's put in your way. My extracurricular activity is doing the plays here at the Port St. Lucie High School Drum Department. And it's an amazing experience, just being able to connect with new people that you probably never knew about, or just being able to perform onstage and just show what you have. And that has helped me in a great way.
Having access now has been really spectacular because not only has it allowed me to organize myself and keep track of my assignments on a day-to-day basis, it's also allowed me to collaborate with my teachers, it's allowed me to collaborate with my classmates. What we did during the marching season was record our rehearsal from behind me, so you could see from the drum majors podium and the entire field. And then we posted it to Edmodo, and then we were able to reflect on our performance and watch what we did. So in that way, we were able to get a different perspective that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise.
At Port St. Lucie High School, we have a team of teachers that works toward the success of each student. These teachers plan together to provide the most engaging curriculum for our students. We don't only want students to take away concepts from our teaching, but life lessons, and also experience in working with the concepts that we're having them apply. I've been to schools in the state, and I've been to schools in this country, and the climate here amongst staff and students surpasses that in other schools. The staff here is dedicated to ensuring that your student will receive the highest form of education that we can provide, and we will not stop at second best. You have to be a Jaguar.
So I came in pretty much an athlete all around, so just joining all the sports, and I've stuck with it ever since. I definitely feel like it has taught me to not be as selfish. Well, I've learned, especially from my softball coach, I've had her my freshman year, and then last year and this year, also as a history teacher. She's just taught me to be a well-rounded person on and off the field.
I would say it boils down to three things: personalization, innovation, and family support. And we have just a lot of different ways that we're helping all of our students achieve their dreams.
And a two- to three-minute video creation is not a two- to three-minute endeavor. It is indeed one that takes quite a bit of time, energy, and creativity. So Mr. Brian Smith and Principal Ocampo, would you please come forward to accept this award on behalf of the students of Port St. Lucie High School? And we have a professional photographer here in the back who's going to come forward and take a photograph for you. Mr. Craig Jerome, if you could please come forward. And if, yes, Mr. Jerome is coming forward, if you all can position yourselves right here. Thank you so much. As we transition to the STAR Award, within our program, the STAR Award is an opportunity for us to recognize outstanding staff members within our organization for providing outstanding customer service to our external customers, as well as our internal customers. We must be exemplary in what we do for one another internally, as well as externally. And that's what's so exciting about this evening, because the two STAR Award recipients are both from our Human Resources Department. And this is certainly an opportunity to recognize these individuals in their peak season of recruitment and retention for the coming school year. They are both being recognized by members of our own St. Lucie Public School family for the service that they have provided us, as we are making sure that we are trying to recruit only the brightest to help support our students. First, I would like to ask that Ms. Chris Worley, please come forward. And from the cheers, you do see that Chris's HR family is here. Chris has been nominated by Ms. Catherine Smith, who is an executive secretary within St. Lucie Public Schools. She has indicated that as a novice in Fast Track, she needed some assistance to understand a couple of things, and Chris took the time to actually walk her through the system so that she was able to understand the areas of position control and see exactly what she was looking for. She knows how busy Human Resources is at this time of year, but Chris, she commends you on the fact that you took the time to give her some very, very helpful learning so that she, as a visual learner, could make sure that she was on track with what she needed to do. And she indicated that you are a true asset to St. Lucie Public Schools, and thanks you so very, very much. And next, coming from yet another member of our own St. Lucie Public School family, Mrs. Teresa Brandafino has some accolades that she would like to share upon Mrs. Jean She says that she has been such a tremendous help to me over the past two weeks with her Fast Track application. While trying to apply for a posted position, I realized that I was not in the system. On a phone call to Human Resources, I was led to Ms. Rodriguez, who quickly and efficiently corrected the situation by creating both a username and a password for me immediately. She also assisted me with uploading documents and following through on request. She has literally held my hand and walked me through this entire process, and my application was submitted in a timely fashion because of her extra care and of her professionalism. My emails and calls were returned the same day, and follow-up was efficient, and most of all, she was a pleasure to work with on what could have been a daunting process for me. "Thank you so very much," is what she has said. So since we have taken the time to be here to support our own family, could you all stand up, please? Because I know you are here as her support staff. Look at this. Isn't this great? Isn't this great customer service for you? And again, if our photographer could please come forward so that we can document this wonderful experience, Mr. Jerome?
Thank you. If there's anyone who wishes to be an unscheduled speaker, the forums are in the back of the room. If you fill them out, please bring them up to our recording secretary. CTA report, Ms. Rodriguez is not here. Mr. Gent?
I won't give the CTA report, but I do have great news that with our partners, CTA and CU, we have reached a tentative agreement that occurred this afternoon, and pending ratification, we think we have a good deal for our teachers and our CU organization. And I wanted to thank the negotiating teams on both sides. It was in a true spirit of collaboration, really a true spirit of trust. And it's a big deal and a major, significant event that this will represent the second year in a row that we have, pending ratification, that we will have settled before the teachers report back to work and before employees report back to work. And that's a tremendous testament to the school board, to the school board's really, one of the things that impressed me the most, that it's really about people and putting people first in relationships. And for a school district, maybe we're the first to settle, I don't know. There's some districts that haven't settled yet on this past year's negotiations, and we'll be complete for the year going in again. And it just shows that, how much we value our employees. And again, I want to commend the school board, I want to commend Ms. Rodriguez and her team as well, and the other folks that run the negotiating team for both sides, and I look forward to working with CWA. We haven't completed an agreement yet, but I'm sure in the future with our partners with CWA that we'll be able to reach an agreement soon. So I want to congratulate the board and congratulate both sides. And that's my CTA report for this evening on Vicky's behalf. She went home ill, a little bit ill right now, feeling under the weather. So we wish her speedy recovery, and look forward to a joint announcement tomorrow with her, and publicizing this within the local media and notifying our employees. Thank you.
Terrific. That's good news for everyone. CWA report, they are not in attendance right now. We're on to our consent agenda. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll have your recommendation.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Is there any IWH poll for separate voter discussion? Think no move or entertain a motion?
It's removed.
Been moved by Ms. Henson, seconded by Ms. Holly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Mr. Harrow? Mr. Gent?
First off, I'd like to recognize two new principals. I believe with, I'm not sure if they were, no, they're on tonight's agenda. So I'd like for them to come up to the front. First off, from Alapata Flats, want to congratulate Anna Rodriguez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the boards, Superintendent Gent. I am excited to begin a new journey as the principal of Alapata Flats. I welcome the commitment to serve the community in my district. I welcome the commitment to lead an amazing staff of dedicated professionals who strive for excellence every day. As the Kids at Hope District, I'd like to thank my treasure hunters, my personal treasure hunters. I'd like to thank Lisa Cash, who was the principal, who encouraged me to become an administrator. I'd also like to thank Patty Galloway, who's been my mentor for many years, and shared her wisdom and her vision with me. I'd like to thank my amazing staff, and I'd like to thank my family. I'd like to thank you, and I look forward to a wonderful year of success and celebrations. Thank you.
Anna will be no stranger to the school. She was the assistant principal at the school for how many years? Four years. So she knows her way around. And the principal, Kim Jay, is coming over to the district office in the position of Director of Curriculum. She's on vacation. And this will be the last vacation she gets in a long time, right? Right, Nick? Okay. Secondly, I'd like to bring up Keith Davis, who will be taking over the principalship at the Performance-Based School.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, school board members. First of all, I want to say how excited I am to have this opportunity as a new principal of Performance-Based Preparatory Academy. Tomorrow, I'll be performing one of my first official duties as summer graduation, and I'm thrilled that these young adults are going to actually get the actual time to increase their chance of success with their diplomas. Thank you for this opportunity, Superintendent Gent, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince, Chief Academic Officer Dr. Wowe, and Assistant to the Superintendent Dr. Kevin Perry, for their professional support in modeling level-five leadership, the pinnacle, which is creating a legacy of leadership within an organization. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a few other names. Thank you to the new administrative team of Ms. Kim Jay and Anna Rodriguez, just for their trust and their belief that one goal increases student achievement. To the Alapata family, I want to thank you all for inviting me to your learning residence, allowing me to observe instructional craft, and please remember, do not invite me to carve turkeys in November. Thank you to my old Ed family, Del Cassens, Mrs. Ellen Harden, and Ms. Donna Gill, just for their insight and reminding me that every day a new day, and each child actually deserves the opportunity to graduate from a high school, whether it's traditional and non-traditional. And finally, to my family, they are not here right now, but to my wife, Marion, to my sons, Corbin and Keith Jr., the word determination is a word that constantly replays in my brain. However, it is not self-determination. My family were determined not to let me quit. They supported me and encouraged me, encouragement was ongoing, and I just knew I wouldn't be standing there without their support. Once again, thank you all, board members.
We also, I'm not sure if they're here tonight. I know many are on vacation. We have some assistant principals, so I'm going to read the names out, and if you're here, just please stand up. We just raided Alapata Flats, so for two folks that went to a principalship. So I'm not sure if it's Justin Allen or Margaret Lewis in the crowd tonight. Okay, there's Margaret Lewis. From Bay Shore, Siobhan Silas. Siobhan here, okay. Fourth Pier Central, Jean Emerson. Lakewood Park, Heather Ricksecker. Lincoln Park, Jeff Wallingford. Morningside, Rachel Morales Lopez. Palm Point, Rachel Koenig. Southern Oaks, Amber Minarchik. White City, Michael McCarthy. And Windmill Point, Kelly Nagro. All right, there's Kelly. Congratulations to those. And if you haven't taken your vacation, you've only got a couple days left, so we're kicking back into gear in about 10 days. But congratulations to everyone. And also, the board approved Dan Frank as our Executive Director of Schools last week, but he was, not last week, but last month. But I'd like for Dan to come up so that he can say a couple of words to everyone. I know, I've known Dan for probably about 10 years now. He's coming to us from Jupiter High School. Jupiter High School, with the latest results from State Accountability, is the second-highest performance school in Palm Beach County. He has gone in and really worked with the community, has increased students in high-level courses, collegiate courses and things. I had the opportunity to work with him in the area office, where we spent a lot of time in Riviera Beach, in West Palm Beach, and in some of our tougher schools, and he's one of the best. I know a couple other folks here that I've hired in the past, but he was one of the best hires I've ever made when I was in Palm Beach County. As a principal, how about that? I'll say it, as a principal, that'll let me out of it. And we're very fortunate that he's going to work with us. He has a tremendous amount of wealth and knowledge, and really dedicated to students and boys and girls and young people. Mr. Frank?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, and board members, and Mr. Gent. I want to begin by saying thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm very excited and honored to be part of the St. Lucie County School District family. And I've been serving students in South Florida for 18 years. I've served them as a teacher, an assistant principal, an area administrator, a principal, and now the executive director. But no matter where my position has been or what it's been, I've always had the same goal, to make sure every student reaches his or her true potential. I've had the opportunity to meet with some principals and district administrators, and I've been very impressed. And I know some amazing things are going to be happening in St. Lucie County this year, and I'm really thrilled to be part of it. So I just wanted to say thank you again, and I'm here to serve the school board, the district, and the staff, the community, and most of all, the students of St. Lucie County. So thank you.
Madam Chair, also, tonight, the board approved my goals for the upcoming year, and I just wanted to touch on that just for a couple of moments. My first goal will be to increase the third-grade ELA proficiency. Currently, we're at 46 percent. The state is at 52 percent. Our goal really is going to be ambitious, is within two years to hit the state, if not sooner, and then to move on with that. We're currently, we made a 2% gain this last year. We're the only district in the area, really, that made a gain there, but we still stand, we're still behind the state percentage. And everyone knows that the key to students being successful is really early learning, really from pre-K on, but even before we get them in pre-K. So we're going to be putting in some specific strategies. We're going to be working with the community, calling it St. Lucie Soars, where we're going to be working and getting volunteers from our different government agencies to give us an hour a week in our school centers. It'll be structured, working in conjunction with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Judy Miller group, I hope I got it right, right? Okay, sometimes I get them mixed up. And so I'm looking forward to that. It's going to be some heavy lifting, but our schools are up for it, our principals are up for it, our teachers are up for it. I know that the key is going to be to develop our teacher capacity, that we put the time and the effort and the energy in to help them be as effective as we can. The second goal will be to increase college and career readiness skills in all of our students, and whether our students go to college, or whether they go into a career that when they come out, they're ready for either one. I'll talk more about this in a couple of weeks when I meet with the board. Thirdly, will be to continue the reduction in out-of-school suspension rates for our students. We've made a nice dip in that this year. We want to continue that. We're going to be working with some specific strategies in our schools, something called single-school culture, where you norm the behavior within schools. We've done that this year at a few schools with a consultant, Dr. Adlett, that's come from the outside, and we've seen some tremendous results of that. But I know that that represents one of the biggest challenges, because if we can't have our students in an environment where they can learn, and we can't deal with some of the emotional issues that they bring to us, then learning can't occur, and it cheats other students. And it really is an effort, not only with the school, with our teachers in our schools, but also with community outside agencies, and our churches and civic groups, where we work together on the total child. And then the other three goals will be the ones that I talked about this past year. I'm going to keep those at the forefront as well, with our graduation rate. I will share that with the board. We'll have great news on that front in two weeks, where we will have surpassed the state average and made a significant gain in that. I'll save the details for a couple of weeks when we meet at the workshop. And then to also shore up and work with improving human resources. We've done an outstanding job this year. You can see the crew was here, they've already left, many of them, I don't blame them. They've been here for a long day. But in the area of teacher recruitment and retention, and customer service, and quality control, we think we've made some significant strides. I'll share that with you all. And then continue the community engagement and outreach and customer service with the different groups that are out there. And so I appreciate the board approving that tonight, and I'll get a report on the successes of this year in two weeks, as well as how this ties into that. As everyone's aware also, our school grades came out from our individual schools last Friday, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that right now, and then we will, for the board, we will get into the weeds in two weeks and share that. I gave you an executive report today that was in your basket, that you can look at each individual school, and then we'll break that down and talk about that in two weeks. But I did want to highlight some successes, and some of the folks are in the room right now. We kind of, the trend kind of mirrored the state. We went, we slipped to a C, we're two points from a B. I mean, you're right there. I'm on that, and it's something that next year, at this time, I know we're going to have great news. But I just wanted to share that the trend that we did kind of mirrors the state, where across the state, I believe it was 32 school districts, so went down a letter grade. Only one district in the state went up, and 34 remained flat. And so I'm only concerned with St. Lucie County. We had six schools that went up a letter grade. St. Lucie West K-8, under Mr. Gardner, Windmill Point, under Ms. Ottega, I think, I saw her here. Okay, there's Nicole out there. And Village Green, where Ms. Barrett went to this year, and her first year at Village Green. And then Southport Middle School, with Ms. Talisse. White City, with Mr. Bon Senor. And Sam Gaines Academy, under the direction of Ms. Wilkie. So those schools, and we're going to congratulate them at our back-to-school meeting. It's also interesting to point out that at two of the schools, we had first-year principals. And so it doesn't mean that you can't step in as a rookie and be ready to roll their pressures on the two principals from tonight. Subtle pressure. We had three As, LPA, Westgate, and Palm Point. Eight Bs, again, St. Lucie West K-8, Southport, Southern Oaks, Mosaic Upper School, Fairlon and Fairlon. And so congratulations to those schools. I mentioned some of the principals. Southern Oaks, Lisa Sullivan, who'll be heading over to Dan McCarty. Ms. Zimba at Mosaic, and at Fairlon, dual role, Ms. Hadeen and Ms. Holmes. Again, as I mentioned, we missed the B by two points. This year's, what was different about this year's test is this is really, it measured student growth and student perform, just student growth. Last year was based only on performance. This year, it was performance and growth, so it gives us a baseline. It shows us the opportunities that we now have in front of us to work with our students. This test is much more difficult, it's much more rigorous, and nobody's complaining about that whatsoever. We're going to be able to show our principals where we've made, where we've made the gains and where our challenges are. We're going to be able to show schools across the state that look like our schools, that have made some have made some dramatic gains, and I'm confident that we'll be able to do, do as well as other schools did in other areas that have some of the same challenges that we face. The, as I said, the, the score and the grades represent, the whole accountability system is a lot tougher than it's been, and that's a good thing. I think that's good for our students, I think that's good for our country, and particularly for our community. One thing that's different is the, is the gains. Proficiency is students that are Level Three and Level Four. In order to be proficient, you only have to go up one point. So if you hit proficiency and you go up one point, then the school gets a, gets a, gets a point for that, and we'll talk about this again in two weeks. But for the Level One and the Level Two students, this is where the toughest challenge is for our district. And there's a direct correlation to poverty across the country and student performance. It's not an excuse, it is something that we can overcome. But a Level One and a Level Two student really has to show a year and a half's growth in order to, in order to be rewarded for that on, let's say, the scores themselves. It doesn't mean that the students didn't show growth. It means based upon the assessment system and the accountability system, if you didn't make about approximately a year and a, a year and a half's growth, then the school is punished or the school's not rewarded for that. I'm not sure if punished is, is an appropriate word or not. But it is a difficult bar for those children, thus the need to really work with our teachers and to work with their principals on capacity building and giving them the level of support that they need. So we have a difficult task, but certainly doable. There'll be no excuses whatsoever. We feel like that we can raise the bar, as the state has done, and excel in all of these areas next year, and have a plan of action to do that, which I'll share with you at the July 24th work session. But, so the scores are in, we'll break it down, but the opportunities, I think, is what we need, need to focus on for the young people, and that our teachers and that our administrators are up to the task with the support of our community. That completes that report. I just want to remind the board that tomorrow is summer school graduation, which is always a nice time, and that'll be at 11 o'clock. We pushed it back a couple of hours because I think there's an event, the, I'm not sure if it's the, a community conversation that they're having in the, in the morning at, I think it's at the Pruitt Campus. And so we pushed back to summer graduation, and we're ready to go there, and we've already announced that the, we've reached an agreement with our bargaining groups. And so as everybody kind of unwinds and comes back from summer vacations, we'll be kicking into high gear and look forward to sharing some successes with you in two weeks, as well as talking about other things and other goals that we have for the district at that time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gent. School Board Members' reports. Dr. Mills?
I certainly want to thank Mr. Gent and the staff here for the CTA and board agreement that we've come to this year, and we're starting off on the right foot in that area, and we were able to collaborate with them. So thank you for your work, both, on both sides, in Vicky's absence as well for CTA. Also, congratulations to the Port St. Lucy Digital Innovation Challenge, using the Access Now and the work that they've done over there at, at that high school. Now, what I really want to talk about is this summer slide, this summer, the first summer that we've had in St. Lucy County, where parents, churches, civic groups, anyone and everyone out there can work with St. Lucy County children during the summertime. And for those of you that may be watching us on our school channel, parents, we do have wonderful resources where you can help us increase our county grade as well as our school grades by providing our children, your child, with the Summer Slide Program during this summer. We've had it at our nonprofit organization, in which we have a summer camp there, and we've been doing that all year. And hopefully, we have others out there as well that are doing the same thing. It's online resources for VPK children, for K through five, sixth through eighth grade, and ninth through 12. And we have just incredible resources in the arts and technology, the English language arts, the, even the English language learners. We have a program, excellent program on there for those children that English is their second language, math, sciences, and social studies. And we have, what I love is the iReady that we have for the first time this year, that is out there in the community. With that iReady, your child can continue to work on their level academics. And what we are finding at our program is that it's a wonderful online resource, because the kids very seldom ask us how to solve things. They're on their level, they already have the foundation, and they're working from that, from that on up. And it is incredible. They, they, the kids know their stuff on each of their own learning levels. So please, parents, churches, civic groups, summer programs, and anyone that I might not have mentioned, if you have a child in your hand over this summer, please get them on our Summer Slide Program. You can get it by going straight to the school website, and it's on the homepage, and we hope that you will continue to help us educate our St. Lucy County students.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hawley? Ms. Hilsen?
Well, one of the goals that Mr. Gent mentioned was working within our community, and this Saturday is the annual chili cook-off at the Everett Fenn Center on Virginia Avenue, and I'm actually being a booth there, working, so I want all of you to come out. All the proceeds go to the Boys and Girls Club of St. Lucy County, which is an integral part of our school system and our community. So if you can, I believe it's like nine to six, and make time to go by the chili cook-off. Even if you don't like chili, there's other food there to eat. But I'm looking forward to that, because it's always great fun for the whole family. Thank you.
We have no unscheduled speakers, so.
What?
Yes, sir.
I just, when we're doing the announcements, I left off one, two things. Tomorrow night at Big Apple Pizza, the United Way Supply Campaign is underway, and they're taking, stop by, have a pizza, 100% of the sales be used to purchase school supplies, sponsored by the United Way. And then Saturday, it's Stuff a Bus Campaign. I like that. Donations of general school supplies are appreciated from the Walmart locations, and they're also going to be filling backpacks, I believe, at Southern Oaks Middle School. So we'll get that, that's on our webpage as well and that information, so it's gearing up for back to school.
Thank you. There being no other business before this body, we are adjourned.